This conference will now be recorded.
The United States of America and consider Republic for which it stands one nation under God and universal for the liberty and justice for all.
So call a meeting to order with item number one, the consent agenda items. If council is all right with approving them all together, I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, this will be a governing body vote given number.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve this.
You have a second?
Second.
Councilman Adcox made the motion, Councilman Shriver is the second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Muller.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Bullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor K R.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. And item number two is request your comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item number three, hearing the first quarter financial report on the city's 2024 financial performance.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, you'll hear a first quarter financial report of Mr. Dunker.
Good evening, governing body. This is the first quarter financial report, as the city manager said. I recognize that I am one of the few items standing between you and the championship game tonight, so I will be brief and then whatever questions you might have, we can we can get to those. Just as a reminder, we went through these when I made my presentation at the last meeting. Part of why we're doing this is because it's best practice and it's something that when it comes to something like a bond rating, they look at whether your city is doing these kinds of activities. So just a very quick reminder on that. As we, this is a comparison, this is a first quarter financial report, but I think it's appropriate to kind of look back because I think it helps us set the stage for where we are. And so looking back, you can see revenues compared to expenditures. And the thing that I think it's appropriate to notice is that in four of the last five years, expenditures have exceeded revenues. So obviously, I mean, water's wet, right? You're not, I'm not telling you anything that you you don't know, but that's not a place where we want to be as a city. We want our revenues to exceed expenditures. So again, just a five-year look back at that. As we look at the general fund right now in the first quarter, so January, February, March, you will see that we have received approximately 42% of the revenue in the general fund and we've had 19% of the expenditures. So that's a good trend. But there's a big caveat with that. Obviously, the city gets a huge property tax distribution at the beginning of the year. And so that skews that revenue number a bit. So again, first quarter, it's a little bit early. Also, I haven't really gotten into the busy season with the departments in terms of, you know, parks is an outspending and doing all their programs right now, public works, same thing. But I will tell you, I looked very quickly and if you take out property tax from that number, it's actually 28% of the expected revenue. And so again, it's that's a good trend at this point in the year. Looking towards the, I just, this is random, I picked the top five general fund revenues and compared budget to actual at this point. And you can see things are trending pretty well. For example, property tax, 63% of, gotten 63% of the amount that we would expect to and we will get another distribution of property tax at the midpoint in this year. Yeah, so that that looks good right now. Sales tax, both the city levy and the county levy are trending just about right on. They're both about 23%. You know, you would expect them to be 25% with 25% of the year done, so that's a good sign. And then franchise fees and court fines are both in the 20% and 27% range. So again, another good sign.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt. I did not, if you want to wait. The property tax that comes from the U G. Are they fairly on time with their payments?
Yes.
I know they.
On that particular one, yes.
Okay, on that one, okay. I'm just curious. I know they've restructured some of their accounting, so I was just curious.
Like was presented, we do have distributions at the first of the year and the midpoint of the year. Those are very consistent.
Okay, thank you.
And timing wise.
Thank you.
What we don't have currently, which is new, is our quarter mill county tax that will, that revenue that we'll see from sci-fi, which we're using towards special highway, that distribution should have occurred already. It might communicate with them and they are talking about it, literally some of the words that they use. They're discussing when, the timing, but that should occur kind of March, then next three months. It's there's, there should be a pattern to it, but I think they're just getting started with that. So that's the only distribution right now that hasn't been fairly consistent. The only other one that we've had to question is the gaming revenue, but luckily we're watching that, so we asked them and they say, oh yeah, you're right. They push the button and send the money. So we, we are on top of it because we're watching that sort of thing. But as far as that particular question, they have, it's fairly consistent on the first distribution and then the midpoint distribution.
Thank you.
The next slide shows you general fund expenditures from the six departments. And again, not to get into the weeds too much, but the biggest drivers of the budget and fire and police are both trending about 20%, so that's a good sign at this point in the year. Parks and Rec, as I mentioned earlier, 11%, so administration 17%, court is 18 and public works is 16%. So I would expect that the next time I'm, I'm in front of you giving this, those numbers are going to grow as, as it gets warmer and the season gets busier. So what's next? The numbers that I presented at the very beginning of this with the 2023, those are estimated numbers, a point in time numbers. So the next step is to complete the 2023 audit. We are having a conversation with the auditors this week, so we'll be diving into that and getting that final draft to you here in the next meeting or two for you to review and adopt or approve.
Approve.
Approve. And then tonight, next item, we will kick off the 2025 budget process. And with that, I will sit for any questions that you might have.
I just have a couple of questions and it's kind of from the previous years. On the go one was the year-to-date slide. Well, here is one of my questions in the five-year comparison. In 2021, our budget went up almost a million dollars. I mean, you know, over 800, 28, 900,000 dollars. And you weren't here for that part, but was that because of CARES Act money or what, what was the jump for?
Well, the expenditures, we'd have to go back and track what you have said right there is, let me look at these numbers. From, from, from the previous year. I know in some of those presentations, we talked a lot about inflation where there was a lot of other drivers. In addition, there was, was not massive change in any personnel, those sorts of things that I could recall. But if you want me to give you, I can give you a written response and go research exactly what the drivers were there. Do you recall from that material what that was?
I just looked at the aggregate numbers.
The aggregate numbers, okay. We would just have to go look at the detail to really give you a good answer, but if you recall from that time and there was some head shaking that we, there, there was a number of emphasis on the cost drivers being inflation areas related. And then, but I, but I know for sure we didn't, that wasn't personnel driven, wasn't, we didn't add a bunch of people and that sort of thing. So what I'll do for you is I will get you that answer and get it everybody into writing, the actual drivers of that.
That would be fine. I guess I was just kind of recalling that, you know, we had some CARES Act money and things like that coming through, but then I would have expected our budget to have dropped back down after that and we just kept going up. And so, yeah, if you want to take, I mean, you just, I wouldn't expect you to know on the spot because that's a few years back. And so, yeah, if you wouldn't mind looking into that.
I would say that the CARES Act was put into this grant fund. So if you think the general fund and there's this grant fund, we would have to move that money around for the expenditures because we didn't spend directly out of that grant fund. So I would say that that money coming in, revenue stream, as well expenses would be tracked in a different way. And I don't know is that had that great of impact on that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And the other one I think was the year-to-date so far, that I had a question about. Yes. And so it looks like we are budgeting to exceed our revenues already by about $200,000. Is that, am I reading that accurately?
Yes, as I have been able to dive into it, the adopted budget, the expenditures exceed the revenues.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure and I know we're going to talk about maybe how to move forward from here, but I just feel like that's a good for council to realize that if we're budgeting in that way and then our revenues fall short and our expenditures are rising, then we're going to end up way worse than, than we even planned for. And that's already looking at a quarter million dollars, so.
Our philosophy has been, and we presume it's in line with your own philosophy as a group, that we should get revenues that equal our expenditures. That's what, what our goal should be. So if you're not doing that, then you're deficit spending and that's why cash on hand dwindles and dwindles and dwindles when you have that philosophy.
Did anyone else have any questions or?
So I got a quick question about budgeting and department heads controlling their own budget, giving them a set budget every year and letting the department heads handle their own budget opposed to coming out of the general fund.
Well, I think for clarification, when you talk about the general fund, you're talking about one pot of money that's been divided by these departments. What, it's really a kind of a placeholder that the police department's going to spend 2 million, the fire department's going to spend 2.2, the public works, it's all from that general fund money. Now, that's how we can divide up those department. And you see that, you see the police department has this much money and they spent this much money in relation to that. That's the appropriate way to, to budget that. There is no other fund to take that money out from other than the general fund. And so the philosophy has been, and it's fairly standard of practice, and I think Doug can speak to that as well, if that's how you divide up, who's going to spend the general fund money? We're going to spend 7 million. It's going to be divided by administration, public works, police, fire, all these other funds that go into that. And so that's how we hold each individual department head accountable is if we give you 3 million, you're supposed to spend 3 million, not 3.1, not 3.2. And if we do do that, then we have to find places to cut those in the general fund. So think of the general fund as one pot of money and all of these department heads, departments managed by the department heads are spending from that one pot of money. That's how it's divided.
Has any department exceeded their budget?
Ever?
Yes. The past year or two?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And so that's why I'm asking that.
Yeah.
They set a budget and they stick to it.
Yes. And that is the manager's responsibility to hold them accountable, right? It's, it's one thing to, we have an emergency and now we have to overspend the police department budget in the general fund by say 200,000 for whatever reason, for example. Well, it's our job to say, if you do that, then we have to find another place in this pot of money to cut so that the same pot of money that, that equals 7 million dollars, for example, comes out to 7 million dollars or less, not more, right? And so that's our job by policy and enforcement of that and philosophy to say that you're not allowed to overspend with very few exceptions. And then if you do, then we have to find other places to cut it. Police department overspends because of some event catastrophic. Fire department then may have to reduce an expenditure or the public works so that we, in the group, we come out to that 7 million dollar budget, whatever, something for that incident. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's, that's on us to do that and we're in a position to do that.
Do we know how much we've spent in the last, or budgeted, I'm sorry, in the last three years to improve the quality of life for like the residents in Edwardsville? Like parks and like, we were just talking about, you know, the parks and stuff like that before the meeting and.
I, I do think the council, when you do set a budget, you're talking about health, safety, welfare, quality of life issues, police, fire, public works, parks, all of those things contribute to that. Now, if your, your goals could be different, you could say, ah, we focused a lot on public safety, we think we're in a good place, now we're going to focus in the cemetery or the parks and rec or some of these other things. But that's really up to you decide and you kind of tell us, these should be the priorities, for example. And, and again, that could change from year to year, but every year you set a budget, which is all about focusing on the health, safety and the welfare, you know, of the community. And I think that all goes to quality of life.
So then do we know how much, then I'll be a little bit more specific. Do we know how much for like parks or like sidewalks and stuff like that that we budgeted for?
Like Parks and Rec, they have their own and I don't have that specific number.
That's okay.
So Parks, Parks and Rec is a general fund department. So that one pot of money, you think of that big pot. So they're, they're going to be allocated for personnel, they're going to be allocated money for parks programming such as soccer and, and all of those kinds of things and what it takes to maintain the park, park maintenance, cemetery maintenance, for example, also in that budget. So, so that all comes down and that's a few hundred thousand.
About 300,000.
300,000, that sounds about right. And so now, if, if that's not enough in an investment, then you want more and we only have this much part of money, we have to shift that from priorities, public safety, public works, that sort of thing and shift it over to the parks. So that's how that would happen. Sidewalks are a different story in the sense of, we are trying to build sidewalks, we're in the process of doing it, but we're taking advantage of money we didn't normally have. And we think, if I understood the philosophy and I totally agree with it, is that it's very tangible. You can see it, you can walk on it, we built it and it goes to an internal destination and that's our school or up to our cemetery where you heard five people, I think, came and said, hey, we'd love to walk on a sidewalk that takes us to the cemetery because we walk around and we visit up there and we do these things, people, quality of life, right? So you're spending some money we wouldn't otherwise have on the sidewalk, but our sidewalks are a part of any bonded plan. If, if that's appropriate on that road, we're going to spend it on the sidewalks. We're going to do these other things. We have STP funding, which comes from Mark, it's federal matching funds for what they call the town center connector. And I want to spell it normally, you know, as you know. But that town center connector is, we'll have some matching funds, but the feds are, they're paying a majority of that where we take our trail all the way up, all the way down, back to the park. It's going to come through this town center and then go all the way over there. So that's an investment in the quality of life and that sort of thing. So that's how we would manage that because even sidewalks, as you can imagine, are fairly expensive. But I think the philosophy here on sidewalks is we want internal connections rather than the absolute, let's connect to some other destination away from our community. I like the internal connections first and then we look at those other things that way. So on sidewalks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Get back to my first page. About the agenda. Okay, that's item three. Moving on to item four, staff and council discussion on the 2025 budget priorities. And so council has sent this kind of a list of questions to consider as we were preparing for this evening's meeting while we're setting the priorities. This was something that I requested since we have a little bit short of an agenda tonight, not to belabor it, but I felt, sorry, I forgot in my notes, I felt that it was important. So at the beginning of the year, I believe members of the council were as surprised as I was to find out that we had violated our financial policy, dropped well below our acceptable general fund balance, went nearly half a million over budget, which resulted in a hit of our, hit of our bond rating. And one of our vital jobs is the governing body is to set the budget. And since our agenda wasn't overly packed tonight, I thought it would be a great opportunity to have a council roundtable discussion in considering what do we want our budget to look like? What information do we need to establish a responsible, transparent and accountable budget? And what are our budget priorities? And then what policies can we update to ensure we are moving toward a more successful future? And so we, we sent some questions for everybody to kind of start those wheels turning and what do we really want this to look like moving forward? In years past, we'd been given like a snippet picture of the city's budget request and then passed a mill levy, but not necessarily department-based budget. So are we fine with just setting the mill levy or do we want it to be more like a household budget where, and it's not a household budget, but where, when you're looking at a budget, you're looking at both the revenues and where the money is going. I, I was kind of thinking of that so we don't get a surprise later. And I do believe that our executive staff now is really helping us move in that proper direction and keeping things on, on top of schedule and moving forward and that accountability with our department heads. But I also thought some of that was kind of lacking on our part as a governing body and we shouldn't be in a position where a year later we're going, well, we didn't realize we were over budget here. We didn't realize that we were under our percentage. And so what can we do? What do we want that to look like moving forward? And then any feedback is welcome here.
Well, I'll start, I, I prefer the traditional revenue expense budget. That's the way I live my life. I hate talking about the mill levy because it confuses the public. If you don't understand it and people like, what's a mill? What's the levy means, blah, blah, blah. I think this is something that the public will be able to understand better because everybody, I mean, nobody has a mill levy at their house, you know, and everybody does the, you know, the traditional revenue expense budget. I would prefer that. And then we can talk about the mill after we, you know, get everything else settled down.
I think that's helpful. I mean, most people don't really understand a mill levy and it gets confusing when we're saying, oh, we're lowering the mill levy, but their tax bill's going up. And so that gets a little confusing to people.
Doug, can you explain a little bit to all of us in this room, the revenue neutral function that the state does that I'm absolutely against?
Absolutely. Governing body, the, the revenue neutral rate is something that every governing body across the state of Kansas examines once a year during their budget process.
Because the audio working, your people, if people are listening at home, is the audio working?
I work in there through the speakers, but it doesn't matter.
I have complaints.
I did a test earlier.
Yeah. I have complaints from people that they can't hear the audio when they're online watching me. So that's something that needs to be thrown into the budget just to change. But I still like to have a little explanation of that revenue neutral rate.
Okay. And just at its most simplest form, it's the amount of money that it will take to equal the number, excuse me, the number of mills that it will take to generate the same amount of revenue from the previous years. So if, for example, in last year, when you did the budget, it took X mills to generate a million dollars, then what we do is rerun numbers and say, what will it take in this budget process to generate the same amount of dollars? And then whatever that corresponding mill rate is, is the revenue neutral rate. So the, the theory behind it is it is keeping things neutral for the taxpayers in that they pay the same mill rate and the city gets the same amount of revenue.
And basically the city will take a hit on that in the long run.
Well, yes, in the sense that expenses aren't going down, right? Things are getting more expensive with inflation, they're just life. And so, yeah, if, if you're only having the same amount of revenue and your expenses are going, staying the same, or going up, excuse me, then we have deficit spending and that's why the fund balance keeps decreasing here.
And that would also be assuming you have zero future economic development in revenue streams.
Yes.
If, if you're going in a deficit.
And the other thing in my experience that it does is it penalizes cities for economic growth. You know, because for example, if you have properties that come back on the tax rolls, in theory, you ought to be able to reap the benefit of those because, you know, probably you gave them a tax break at some point and now they're coming back on. The whole theory 10 years ago was you gave them a break so that in 10 years, you would have new property taxes on the tax rolls, but revenue neutral kills that as well.
I'd like to go on record with this council now that I will oppose a revenue neutral rate, no matter how that's thrown to us, I will oppose that. And I'm unwavering on that.
And if we're going on the record, I'll just say I love the revenue neutral from the state. It was originally called truth and taxation because people were wanting more transparency in their tax bill. They were so tired of, like I said earlier, the government saying, we're cutting your taxes, look, we cut our taxes, pat yourself on the back. And then their tax bill kept increasing year after year. And so what that does is it says, okay, city of Edwardsville, just like Mr. Gerber just explained, this is how much money you brought in last year. Are you charging more or less this year to run your city? And yes, expenses do go up, but that's when we put on our big boy suits and just say, okay, it costs more money to run the government, so we either need to find other places to cut, bring in more economic development, or just be honest with our taxpayers and say, hey, it costs a little bit more money, so we need to do an increase and, and not hide behind that, oh, we cut your taxes because the mill, mill rate went down. But everybody has, and, and that's, that's the, kind of the hard part of it is, is a lot of people, and I've told you before, I know that it's not, not always possible. It's very rarely possible to go revenue neutral. Some places absolutely can, but to run a city on revenue neutral, you'd have to have some more streams of revenue coming in to be able to do that, which hopefully will get to you in the near future. Let's see. When considering a budget process, I think we kind of will work toward this, what do we need to make an informed decision? In years past, we have passed our budget on a mill levy only without a presentation regarding how that expenditure or, or general fund would further, further out than the budget year. So if we're given a 2023 budget, we're looking at year 2023 and not really presented with 2024 and 2025. I know something that is a priority of our current city manager in forecasting a little bit more of what our budget's going to look like. If we're to hire additional positions, for example, what does that look like for 2024? What does that look like for 2025 and 2026? So we know the financial impact of those decisions. I really appreciate that and I thought, council, we could just discuss, I know if you go too far out in years, it really doesn't make any sense because you don't know inflation rates and how things are going to change. But just as a council, what do we want to see? Are we comfortable seeing just the present year or do we want to see two years out, three years out?
I don't think it's a good idea to, to go two or three years out. We have no idea what's going to happen, you know? I do, when I do my budgets, I go from the following previous year or two years back and just see where the trends are, you know, and what's going on. But I, I never go over that about two or three years. I don't.
So just a couple of years out?
Yeah, we don't have any idea what's going to happen tomorrow, you know?
It's going to be an elf norm.
Another one? God damn. Now we got my check from the last one.
I haven't even got my other.
Well, I think it's a good idea. We've got some fairly big projects coming up, so might not be a bad idea. Nothing can be set in stone with the numbers, but just to have, have a glimpse of it.
Yeah.
A year out, two, maybe possibly two. Doug, what is the dollar equivalent to a mill?
For easy math, we'd like to say $100,000.
Really?
It's not.
It's gone up.
It's not 100,000, but that's, makes it easy.
It used to kind of comparatively be a full-time employee. Used to be. Right, long time ago, but you know, with benefits and everything, you know, salary, benefit, the whole package, but it's gone up.
Yeah, about four years ago, I think it was 75,000 in Edwardsville.
Interesting.
Well, if you kind of look back and not to, if you don't want to mayor, it kind of shows you that in the top general fund revenue of the presentation we just had, if you look at property taxes and we're expected to generate 2.9 million dollars, we have 30 mills assigned, we're just a little over one mill, $100,000, just slight over $100,000. And what that, why that's short of that 3 million is because of potentially 2% to 5% defaulted taxes that we just don't collect, right? So you account for potential uncollected tax. So we should generate $3 million. So we should generate $3 million, $100,000 in that. So that's kind of, that's the reference there. Our target is that 2.9. Hopefully a little more because we collect 100%, now a little more from previous years that weren't uncollected. And then we have 10.41 mills assigned to our debt. So this is general fund collection, and then we have the debt collection. So it's 40.41, somewhere in between that.
Are we collecting taxes on all of the industrial park?
Uh, no, we do. We have several, I'd say, somewhere between five and 10 pending industrial revenue bonds, some abatements, payment in lieu of taxes. That's how those work. And there's every few years, some of them fall off. And that's Mr. Gerber referenced, kind of, we gave an abatement for 10 years and now it's coming due. And if you go revenue neutral, sometimes you don't reap those benefits.
Right.
You can if there's other sources of income, but in the sense of our scenario, just as it's built, you know, we might not reap those benefits, but it, you know, that's for a different day, a different discussion. But every few years, we have some that were done 10 years ago, right? It'll come off. And there's, again, anywhere from five to 10 of those in the list.
That would be good to have an update once in a while on on the industrial park and or just all different tax incentives that we have out there and kind of a schedule of when they're falling off and where that leaves us debt-wise and that sort of thing.
If if I might comment, I know it was about the where forecasting where we should be. And I think I came out pretty strong in my, at least preference to give you a second year look. So if we're looking at 2025, I'd like to give you a look at 2026. It may not be in this great detail that we have here, but comparatively, how is payroll impacted? How are these things expense-wise impacted? When you hire five people in one year, right? They're going to get raises in the next year. Their 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 insurance could go up, that sort of thing. So what's that alone impact, right? Do they need more uniforms, right? Is there something else that impacts that? And then you can make that inform, if you're doing that decision today, you know, in the next couple of years, you're funding it next year. And then, oh, by the way, the next year, it's 3%, 6% more and that sort of thing. It just gives you a kind of a snapshot picture of what this decision today may impact in that next one or two years. Are we plus or minus 3% margin of error? Probably. But at least it gives you an idea. And then, you know, you're not holding us to the to the firm fire of, you know, that's absolutely what it has to be in 2026, 27 or something, but you've got a two-year picture. I really like that idea. It gives you something more. So if if you don't mind, we would certainly like to at least try that piece of it and give you that. And then if if it doesn't work for us, we can always back off. Or I didn't like the three and four years, it's just so much has changed. If you think of 2020 and then you look at what we did performance-wise, that would be really hard. Nobody expected 2020, right? So if that happens again in some other way, some different way, we just would be so inactive. It's irrelevant. So we'd just like to give you a two-year picture if you don't want.
Any other? One other thing, and this is something that Councilman Mullin kind of mentioned earlier, was as it is now, we kind of set a big, one big bucket budget, that, sorry, I'm smacking my microphone there, and that general fund instead of departmental. So we don't really, we kind of get that snapshot of of what those are looking for, what the departments are requesting moving forward, but that doesn't leave us a lot of information about the the parks and and what do we really want to to fund going forward. I also think that makes it to where if a department goes over budget, then they're pulling from that general fund instead of pulling from their own budget and saying, okay, whatever department, you went over by 25,000, find in your department where we can pull back instead of affecting the whole general fund budget. Um, and then what I would want to consider is if then they're going to come back and pull from the general fund, that has to first be vetted through our city manager and then to the governing body, so we're not violating financial policy. But I just wanted to talk to council about that too and see what do you think about a big bucket general fund budget? Or do we want to see more accountability, like per department, where we're getting that? Okay, this is what we're saying for public works. This is what we're going to say for fire department. But then we can make sure if we're doing those parks, if we want to invest more than just in programs, we need to see where that money is going to be invested, but then, okay, where is it going to come from too? Because because there's only so much money to go around. And that helps us to really picture kind of how that goes in and comes out. Do, does anyone have any thoughts or comments on that?
I would like, I would like to see each department get their own budget and manage from within that. And that holds the department heads accountable for their.
This is something that I had kind of got some information about before, and I think that we have an equipment schedule, like each department, I think, has their equipment schedule. And you can tell me more about this because I don't really see this side of it. Do those departments, does each department budget their according to their equipment schedule? So if they're going to buy a vehicle, for example, and they know one's coming due in three years, do they kind of schedule that out where they're putting about a third of that vehicle in their budget each year for three years? Or or how do we handle big equipment purchases per department besides just pulling from special sales tax?
My first answer is I think there is some inconsistency in in that kind of equipment rotation policy about when we're going to buy a truck for public works, for example. I think it's not been a scheduled event, you know, that that's part of a, you know, capital improvement plan, things that we don't have across the board. Now, the police department handled it one way, the fire department handled it another way. And some of that has to be a little unique in the sense of a fire truck has a, say, a lifespan of 20 years, right? So what's our, what's our replacement schedule look like for that? They're very expensive, of course, and, you know, where do you fund them from, that sort of thing. But we don't have, I don't think, across our city system that we have a consistent equipment replacement plan. And that would certainly be one of our strategies. Now, do we make business-like decisions? For example, I can, I could speak for the police department because I did it for so long. And we had a business-like decision about how we protect our cash flow and where it is that in addition to that purchase the equipment, it also includes the sale of the equipment. So some offsetting revenue, right? So that was a system of three-year rotations, managing how many miles they drove every day, right? Because you could drive and drive and drive and drive, and suddenly you got a brand-new car that has 300,000 miles on it, that sort of thing. So some of those policies were put in place to not only when we purchase, how we purchase, and then what we do when we sell the vehicle. Does it come back into the general fund? Do we have other ways to then fund? For example, our recent, recent sale of assets are now going to that municipal equipment fund, which we established, and I will argue, someone blew in the face that I asked this for 10 years, that we should be doing it this way. And we finally got it done. And I'm glad for that because this will show you that if we're taking this money, we have some revenue generation. I mean, we have to do some transfers, but at some point, this should be healthy enough to then start paying on a rotation basis. That's a systematic process that then we are wholly buying these things in a program launch, right? It's financially smart, that sort of thing. And then you could really see right now, each department is saying, I need a truck for X. I need this car. And it's the payment for that because typically we are at least purchasing our equipment, especially big-ticket things like vehicles, that then that 100,000 that pays for three police vehicles, for example, is budgeted every year to make those payments. And why that's important is spikes. If suddenly we say, hey, we're not going to buy vehicles for two years, and then you need six when you could have bought two every year, suddenly you've got to come up with four, remember the big number, 400,000? And that was for several different departments? That's one department. Suddenly you've got, or you have equipment that you put a new motor in, for example, a new engine in, that that's already past its lifetime and you you just put a, you know, a $7,000 engine in a car that's worth 3,000 bucks, you know? Just, it's not good math. So as far as how we process these things, it's not consistent amongst the entire city system, if you will. And I think Mr. Gerber and I will have a strategic plan that will standardize that. We'll be able to demonstrate, again, when we purchase them, how we purchase them, and how we pay for them, and what the return on that investment is. That's kind of our plan.
No, I, I mean, I would just, most cities would simply call this asset management. And you start with what are your assets? And then you figure out when those assets are going to deteriorate to the point that they're no longer useful. And then you plan to replace them at that time. Pretty, pretty simple stuff. But as the city manager said, there needs to be a framework around that that's managed.
And I wouldn't expect for like a fire department truck to be replaced at the same year mileage that a police car is, they're used differently, and I understand that. But I just, I think that would be just helpful information to, like, see that this is budgeted, it's it's within their budget, and it's not just a pull from random, you know, general or special sales tax funds. Does anyone have any other thoughts on that? I don't want to just.
On that fund, that fund that you just mentioned that we did, how much is in there now? Have you got an idea?
Yeah, we we sold assets to the tune of about $94,000, and all of that money is there. And then we should be selling more assets by summer, and all of that money will be deposited in that particular account.
Is it too early to project what kind of profit that's going to be in a year?
You know, when, it just depends, of course, you know, Purple Way, which is the auction site, you know, those those prices can vary, what people are.
But it's about 90,000 now.
Well, yeah, it's 94,000 in in the deposit right now in that account. If we sell two police cars and maybe one or two other vehicles, you're, say, $15,000 apiece, we're, we're pretty comfortable with that number on the used car market. So you're, you know, we can get 45, 50,000 out of all those assets. We have other assets as well, there are equipment that are not being used that we will sell this year on Purple Way to get it out of our inventory.
That was the next thing I was going to ask you, how many we got sitting around not doing anything?
Yeah, an old mower, that sort of, that kind of thing. And so when we sell those, that'll, that'll go back to that particular account as well.
Are you controlling that? City manager controlling that or who's controlling that?
Which part?
The the budgetary part of that.
Yes, well, number one, policy-wise, we decided when we, when we created that account, meaning all of us here, that that the sale of the assets would help shore up that account.
Well, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, you know, so because we started with zero, right? We just said one day we're going to open this account, it's municipal equipment fund. And and then we needed a way then to start funding it. And so we we knew upcoming were the sale of assets, the vehicles primarily. But we do have other things, like I said, mowers, old, old equipment, things that we're just not using that still have some value that will, every little penny, in my opinion, counts. And then we have, we do have vehicles being paid from the general fund, right? We have these payments, police, fire, public works, wherever. It's kind of a, it it's a little unique because we have general fund payments. We also have special sales tax. If you recall, the police department was excluded for for what seemingly good reason, that we looked well-funded, we we presented well, that sort of thing in the community. And they thought the fire department, the public works, and the parks really needed some attention money-wise. So that's the feeling we got in the community on the third time that we went to this special sales tax originally, and we finally got it passed. So the police department has been kept to the side of that particularly fund. But in the, in the, in the renewal of that, they included all public safety in the language. So now, but a lot of that special sales tax is primarily fire department, some public works vehicles and equipment as well, and some for the parks. So what we're going to do is take the general fund and the special sales tax money already attributed to those payments, and we're going to move them and pay all vehicles will come out of the one fund. So we know where it's all coming from and what the payments actually are. Then we hope to, if you can solidify this fund well, if it's healthy, that you don't have to put 100,000, 200,000 in vehicle payments in your general fund. So we're hoping to cash, use the cash over here to make those payments. That's, that's the whole goal.
Mr. Gerber, are you agreeing with that?
Absolutely.
Sounds like a good deal to you.
Absolutely, yes.
It's, I mean, it's a little confusion, but it sounds good. You know, anytime you're going to have that, you know, where you can readily access a vehicle. But then again, vehicles are kind of hard to come by now anyway. I guess if you got the right chips, you could go down on Kansas Avenue and get a bunch of pickups. But there are about 1,500 of them down there.
One of our next questions on here is what information will make the budget process more effective? More or less detailed numbers, more or less presentations? How's council feeling as far as the kind of are updated? We get the quarterly updates and some information along those lines. Is there any changes that you want to see or anything that would help more?
I would like to see more detailed numbers, more, not less.
I agree. I think that would be helpful to me, not necessarily more frequent presentations, but it could be more like we were talking about earlier with the special sales tax fund or or the the debt fund, industrial park schedules, things like that, they could just be emailed, I think. But it would be helpful to just see those so we can kind of know. I mean, people ask me sometimes, like, you know, the, about like industrial park, like Margaret was asking or or Councilman Shriver was asking earlier, you know, how many businesses are under incentives there? And it changes, and so we don't always know that, but I think that would be helpful. Is there anything specific, Councilman Bishop, that you'd like to see?
No. Just overall, you know, I mean, we don't have to go into details like police department's using this much gas or fire department's using this much diesel, but just the amount, you know, the amount of that it is, you know, that we can see and something like that.
We got this much and we spent this much?
Yeah, kind of.
Add addition and subtraction.
I agree. I agree. I like the numbers, although I I I had a question, I don't know why I didn't ask this, but the interlocal agreement between Bonner, KCK, and Edwardsville with the fire department, was that maybe possibly going to help with the overtime? What, was that brought up? Was that asked? Was?
The simple answer is no. You know, if you're talking about fire personnel in the way that is what they call a Berkeley hybrid schedule, not to go too far down the weeds, but there's built-in overtime every month based on how the schedule is. So that doesn't go away. The next piece is, if could overtime be added because we're on a run either in the at at the, in the city or outside the city based on this agreement? We could. It could be enough of a fire or something that big enough ordeal that people are out there past there 24 hours and therefore they they've gone into overtime. So that wasn't necessarily built to control those measures. It was really about assembling the amount of personnel necessary at a hazardous scene, a fire scene, an EMS scene, and that we have, that we have continuity of service. If we're, if we're busy with a big event and then another big event happens, we have Bonner Springs and KCK Fire to come help us and vice versa. And so that that's kind of how that's built is it's that that, though it's formal, we have a handshake that we're going to agree to work together and and kind of share the assets of each organization so that we can, you know, function at the highest level possible when there's a big event.
Right. I, and this is a little off the subject, is Bonner still beefing up their fire department or do you have any idea?
The last I heard, and I did, I saw Sean the other day, their city man, I'm sorry, but we didn't really talk about that piece of it. I understood that they were going to hire a portion of their 12 people, six or so, and then they were going to hire six more. And I I expected that they went through, and the mayor may have an answer.
They went full-time in March.
So that should alleviate a lot of, several of our calls out there.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to hear.
We want equity in the interlocal agreement, it's more than we've had in the past. And I I've been reassured in previous conversations that they're ramping up to a full-time service. Well, it'll be more equitable for both sides.
Right. And I I don't mean to sound a little cuss about that, but I just, it went on for a while and I really didn't realize it was going on, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, for the initial budget formulation and presentation, from where should our budget planning begin? And so in years past, when we had a budget presentation of the governing body, staff had already the assessment that you're, and so they would look at, okay, what is the tax revenue likely going to be based on the assessment increases, usually increases? And so what they would do from from our perspective as the governing body is they would say, okay, this is how much we could take. And then if we cut that back just a little bit, we'll build a budget around that and then still say we can give a half a mill decrease or something along those lines. So I think as a governing body, we just want to look at, do we want staff to So I think as a governing body, we just want to look at, do we want staff to start their budget formulation? Assuming we're going to take an increase in taxes so that increase in assessed revenue, assuming we're going to decrease taxes, which Councilman Malot mentioned earlier, is, is kind of a, a risky game. You have to know what your expenses are going to be and, and if, if we have, um, any increases coming along. Uh, or are we going to assume, kind of look at even Steven and the same amount of revenue from last year and then build from there? And what do we want our budget to look like? So where do we want staff to start formulating their, um, budget calculations?
I, I want, I think we should assume and save revenues previous year. And I just won an election, so I got four years. I would not be opposed.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to laugh.
Well, I'm going to say it, you know what I'm going to say. I'm going to say that we have been lowering the mill levy for the last several years. And what I'm looking at in front of me now is we're paying for it and how it's caught up. And I think that we need to not even consider lowering the mill levy. And I think that's the way staff should look at it. I told Zach and Mike before, I said, you're looking at everything through rose colored glasses. And eventually things are going to happen that it's going to catch up with you and you're not going to be able to pay for what you have. That's my philosophy on it. That's, you know, that's why I'm against the revenue neutral, one thing. That was supposedly cut three hundred thousand dollars off your, off your budget with the stroke of a pen for the revenue neutral. And I think that if we keep it even or even consider a half increase, you know, that's, that's where I stand on it. So we're talking about equipment, you know, we're discussing facilities, we're talking sidewalks, we're talking all these improvements, parks and all of that. You can't pay for that if you don't have any money coming in. And what I'm looking at here right now is we've been, we've been penalized for the eight dollars a month or whatever we've saved our residents. So I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, that's black and white.
And that's, that's what we're here to discuss, um, is just to hear everybody's perspective on those. I think it's important to understand that even though we have reduced the mill every year for the last, well, since I've been here, the last six years, we've removed, reduced the mill levy, that our Edwardsville city tax bill has gone up every single year. Um, and so we haven't cut our budget back. Our budget has actually increased every year, but it's by about, we're, about how much do we want to increase it? Or, I mean, that decreasing taxes would actually, it wouldn't be leaving the mill the same. It wouldn't even be reducing the mill, it'd be reducing below revenue neutral is what we'd have to do to, to decrease taxes. Um, but that's what we're here to discuss. My preference would be looking at, and I think this is what Councilman Malot mentioned at first, looking at how much did we spend last year? And then instead of looking at how much the increases are this year, because I think that's a dangerous game. We can't assume taxes are going to keep going up year after year after year, because then we will end up in a hole. But look at, okay, what did we spend last year? And then build it off of that instead of building in the increase. Does anyone else have?
What did Garner, and Garner made a statement today, I think, or yesterday about the Wanda County taxes. The commission is raising again. Two negative votes, I think Burrows and Stites voted against it. But that's where, and I try and, I, I don't best to understand this, I, I've been around it a long time. Wanda County is who's raping us. It's not us that's raping Edwardsville. Wanda County is raping us and the people need to understand that. We keep, I mean, we don't get the services we should get from the county at all. We do have a, we do have some help in there now with, with Chuck Stites being in there and with Tom Burrows in there. But there are only two people, there are only two votes in there. We have to maintain, we have to take care of our own here. And if we keep cutting this mill, it's not going to help our town at all as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, that's just, I look at it year after year after year. I pay taxes just like everybody else. I live on a posted stamp with a septic tank and I'm paying thirty percent more now than I was two years ago. So, and I'm willing to pay that little bit of extra money to have a police car come to my house, a motor truck come to my house, an ambulance come to my house. I'm willing to shell that money out for what I consider the, the average person around here would spend at the dollar store on a two liter bottle of Coke once a week or go to Riverside Red X and buy a carton of cigarettes for forty dollars. That's, that's the way I look at this. So, you know, that's, that's my opinion. I'm an old opinionated old guy, but that's just the way I feel about it. So the rest of the council, that's why I'm only one up here, so. That's, sorry, that's my dissertation.
That's what we're here, that's what we're here to talk about.
One of my concerns is that since we've had our bond rating dropped about three places or three steps down, that actually hurts us in the long run if we go borrow money, because our interest rates are going to be higher and those are for long term. So if we get, instead of, if we would have been still triple A minus, I'm plus something like, we might get one more percentage or a percent and a half for twenty years. You do the math on that, that's more than eight bucks a month and that's for twenty years. And that hurts the citizens more than, you know, uh, but I need, I think our fund balance, I mean, our reserve fund balance should be over fifteen percent. And I think we should try to do that to get our bond rating back. Because in the long term, debt is what kills you, even in your own personal life. The interest rate is what kills you, not so much the debt. And, um, we were fortunate to get the four and a half the last time on that bond. I thought it was going to be seven or eight. But I think if it goes down any further, it's going to hurt us even more, you know, in the long run, you know? I mean, I don't, I think twenty years out on loans and things, you know? You figure out the interest on a loan like that, my goodness, it's, it's, it's a lot.
You gain a, you gain a full interest point on twenty-five million dollars over twenty years. Right, that's pretty substantial. And I, I appreciate Mr. Gerber coming in and one of the first thing he notices, well, we haven't, we haven't really reached that fifteen percent in quite a while. But you saw his number, which I totally agree with, he said, we should be at thirty percent.
Yeah.
You know, we're, that's, that's going to take some effort on our part to shift some of the internal priorities and things. But it can be done, it's going to take, take the effort. And it starts with this first budget presentation in the sense of how, what, I think the question is through discussions was, how do you want us to come in? You know, there's a, what I always call the kitchen sink. You, you ask the staff, give me all your wants, desires and budget needs. Throw them all on this big pile in this kitchen sink, if you will, and then we start to drain, you know, so drain it down to something reasonable that we can come in. You know, is this a priority this year or is it absolute or is it emergent? Or by the way, could we plan in the next three years to pay for what's in this kitchen sink? What, what are the, so that's a question to start with. I don't want to give you a kitchen sink because it's really unreasonable. What I'd like to give you though, it could be, I have, I've heard revenue neutral, what does that box look like, right? You should see it, right? I think you should see it. Could it be some of our recommendations? That's the next box. And then are we somewhere in between or, you know, I don't, I just don't want to give you something that we wasted our time and your time on. So I think that question that the mayor's posed here is that it's very valid in the sense of what do you want us to give you? And at least give us a sense of that. And I think we have some ideas where, hey, what is it going to take to pay for what we have right now? Is that different now than it will be in July? Because you know what happens in July? We take on three firehogs, you know, that's the reality. And what, and it's a hundred percent plus any raises and things that are built in at the first of, of next year, right? So those are things that we have to keep in mind. And what we haven't locked in right now is where we stand with our audit. And what our audit tells you is how we ended up expenditures, revenue and cash on hand. And that will help us make some decisions. But what we want to, after that audit, we want to bring you a say, is this kind of what you're looking for? Is this, does this answer some of your questions and concerns? Is it enough detail? Should we bring you some more? We have a few months to do this, but we, that's why we're going to get an early start. This is earlier than we normally do it. We're asking questions, this is a little different than we've done. I think it's a good thing because we really want your feedback. We want to hear what you think the priorities are and where we should be. Should you get a revenue neutral rate? Yes, we should give you that budget and we should tell you what's the impact of that, positive or negative. Here it is. And then you have the choice of saying, well, what's the next option? We won't, we don't want to opt, too many options, you don't want that too, it just gets confusing and, you know, we belabor things. But from these few presentations, these two few boxes that we can give you, then we can come back and formulate something that, hey, this is exactly what we thought it should be. And that's sort of, does that sound reasonable as an approach that we could take?
I think so. I think it, it makes it very politicized when we start with kitchen sink and have to like go back and back and back and back. I think it, it kind of makes a negative, um, just climate where if we start here and say, okay, now how can we add? It just, it, I think it is a little bit more cohesive or like a team.
We can do some distorted things, you know, in the sense of history, you know, that, hey, we always talk about compensation. We always talk about the benefits and that sort of thing. We talk about vehicles and we, these equipment things, and those can all be included in here. And then these are, okay, do we need to cut out a couple of cars? Do we need a, you know, not, not, not ten percent raises, but maybe two percent raises? Those kinds of things, we can have it from these baselines and that's kind of the idea I have. Doug, Mr. Gerber, do you have it? Sorry, I call him Doug all day long.
No, I would agree a hundred percent that scenarios is the best approach so that you guys have, can make an informed decision based on different perspectives.
Any thoughts on that?
Just FYI, just kind of did a rough math, it's five million bucks over twenty years on an extra one percent. It's about that and I didn't compound it, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's two million less than our budget.
And that's a good point to really consider is when we're looking at our budget and we're talking about those forecast, when we're talking about additional personnel and such, how much of a hit is that going to be to our general fund? Because that, we were not presented with that last year when, when we talked about those spots. And so, um, I agree with Councilman Bishop, we need to make sure we're keeping our general fund or, uh, at that healthy level to, to get back and do a successful, um, financial state. Any other comments on that before we move on to the next? Okay, um, how should we best, or how should we budget special highway or sci-fi and special sales tax funds? Um, sci-fi is very new to us, we're really thankful for it and, and excited to be moving forward. I know, um, when I, um, had talked about this before, and I, I believe still streets are very, uh, important to our residents. It's a top priority in Edwardsville. And so we want to make sure that sci-fi, especially because hopefully it will be around for as long as we shall live. Um, but we're not guaranteed that. And so we don't want to cut back on our street maintenance budget. That sci-fi should be icing on the top. It should be in addition to that. Um, but when we're looking at top priorities and we're looking at special sales tax funds, how, how do we want to see those? Do we want to see reports on those, um, like Councilman Bishop mentioned, seeing more numbers, um, and Councilman Triver seeing more numbers? Do we want to see those, um, reports a little bit more regularly? Do we want to set any, uh, policies for those and, and what we want those spent on? Of, of course, as to fall within the, their categories.
If I can, just for clarification, the sci-fi is a county infrastructure funds initiative. And, uh, we are dedicating that, unless you tell me differently, uh, to special highway. Now, we, we get funds, uh, it's not a terrible amount of money already in that, uh, that special highway fund through other sources, primarily the state, uh, that have transferred. Uh, the county gave, gave us, uh, maybe a year or so ago, I think, uh, Mr. Stites advocated for it. There's a surplus there and then I think it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, we expect one quarter mil assigned from the county to, uh, to be deposited in that particular account annually. And again, I mentioned that there are distribution, uh, schedule, but they're already off of a little bit. I think they're just trying to coordinate how to transfer, what to transfer, that sort of thing. Once we get that system in place, then we'll have an idea. But right now the projections were, the budget was very conservative, not, not, not particularly by me, but I didn't change it. It, we're, we're expected to generate about five hundred thousand dollars and we were in the, we're in the conservative projections about three fifty. We'd like to get a surplus in that and then figure out what to do. If you recall, you know, there's not a cheap street project whatsoever. They're just, they're just so expensive and therefore, you know, you could easily spend a quarter block, all of your money that you have. And, and so I think the question here then is, if I, if I understand it right, that what would be the priorities? Is it, should we use this special highway specifically, uh, are we, if we need striping? If we need, uh, some of these things that we can afford, we can do a lot with these smaller projects and, and accomplish a number of things? Or is it that you want to save that because you're going to have to, uh, to then start funding your own projects without bonding, without these grant funds and things which could dry up, you know, and, and they're competitive and that sort of thing? If, do you want a surplus in there and then focus on bigger projects? Or, or should we use it, for example, our sewer fund supplies or supports one person? We have a sewer foreman that's paid out of our sewer fund. And the sewer fund, and the general fund question over here from earlier, this is that bucket? The sewer fund is a completely different bucket. That's six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars regularly in it and it supports one eighty thousand dollar total all-in employee for a second. Could we do that with sci-fi and move out of general fund? Maybe the part-time or one labor person or the, or the public works, you could do those things, just putting that out there. So that, so really the priorities, like you said, Mayor, this is somewhat new to us again. It's been, I think my first year here, we had it and then we didn't have it until, once again, we have it now. So it's been quite a long time. So is it, would your priority to be, should we get more surplus in it and then figure out how to spend it? Should we start spending it and budgeting it in addition to what we've already allocated for street projects? New signs, posts, some of this, you know, uh, shoulder maintenance, that kind of thing. We're not building big streets with that. So, so I'm just kind of framing that up. The question is built on that is how would you like us to go forward? Because even the smaller project, little by little, could spin that net. And then hopefully we maintain at a high level of collection, that quarter cent mill from the county side, which again is projected to be around five hundred thousand for this particular twelve month period. Now, that changes up or low, you just saw.
I personally think that since it's not, um, guaranteed, it would be dangerous to fund personnel or staff out of it. Um, I think it would be wise to try to save it toward bigger projects instead of like twittering it away a little bit at a time. Um, and then maybe saving some money, um, to keep us out of debt and, and paying cash basically for some of our, um, bigger projects or grant funded, our percentage of the grant funds and those sorts of things um, to keep us from paying the, um, high interest rates that we were discussing earlier.
And maybe Mr. Gerber has somewhat of a response, but given those bigger expenses, three-year period of just limited spending from that account, there's a, the quarter mill going into it, for example, and I think the suggestion here is that we save it for bigger projects. Thirty-six months of collection maybe into that, that we barely spent out of that, would that be?
Yeah, I mean, if that's a, if it's a goal to just spend cash or to be able to cash fund it, then yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
And we can still spend what our city is investing in the budget on this, in the, in the street funds to maintain and, and improve our current streets, correct?
Yes. Now, again, we, we do have a source in that particular fund, which will not be the county quarter cent, uh, or quarter mil, I'm sorry. Uh, so, you know, that can, I think, I'm guessing, you know, sixty thousand or something to that effect. But you, you also, and you mentioned this in the question, the special sales tax fund does fund, has an allocation for street improvements. Again, I, I don't, I don't know if it's a hundred thousand, just double, triple check and I can certainly let you know. Uh, you know, and again, we have so many sources kind of going after that particular fund. And the big one is the fire department because they have very large, very expensive equipment that they have to purchase. And we've done some shifting of some of the equipment that they need in the general fund and moved that over a little bit. But that money should be there and, and, you know, right now we have general fund, street, special sales tax, street, they're different. And then you have the special highway. You have three different sources. And I do like the idea of, okay, this quarter mill from the county, we put it in this special sales tax fund. we put it in this special sales tax fund. And I'm sorry, in the special highway fund. And we let that build up for a period of a few years and it has a surplus. But then we're also supplementing some of the things that we could do project-wise. Fix a shoulder, for example. Cold patch, hot patch, replace a parking lot, you know, the service, you know, chip and seal, whatever it would be, that that helps fund some of that. And then the special sales tax as well. And then we may stop doing those kind of things in the general fund. If you, if you really want the policy that we're 15-plus percent, the more you go into that general fund for these things, they're expensive. It just eats away your cash. So these other funds have a funding source that is not your general fund, right? So that's where I think we should focus our attention. Can I speak freely? I think we ought to scale back what we're doing with the fire department purchases out of there going forward. Let's scale that back. We have to look at our parks. We have to look at our streets. And how do we start funding those things? Special sales, special highway, you know, they have their own funding source and we can kind of start looking. And then scaling back, we may have to consider individual purchases from the general fund from the fire department, but it's not tenant, maybe, right? It's these other things. And then we have new enough fire equipment, big trucks and things. But these are on a 20-year or 10, 20-year rotation. That's where we have some time then to start gaining some cash and then being able to fund other projects. And maybe we reconsider where these funds are coming from for those equipment purchases. That's, those are my thoughts, but I don't have to do it that way.
Any other? Any thoughts on special sales tax? So special sales tax, I just feel like a lot of it has been funding equipment for a long time. And that is really one of our only sources of improvements to our parks and public spaces for quality of life for our residents. I think if we went back over the last few years, probably wouldn't see very many funds coming out of our special sales tax to actually improve our parks. Some of it would, our budget, some of it goes to program, but not to infrastructure improvements, our ball fields, our play equipment and our shelter that we have. There's some good assets there, but we've not been doing our best at maintaining those. And so I feel like it would be nice if we maybe had a policy set where we had some percentage of special sales tax that maybe would be dedicated toward specifically quality of life for our community. Does anyone have any thoughts or input?
We can certainly present you with what that would look like. We can talk about the history of that account, you know, and break it down between the departments that are already authorized to spend from there. And then we can, we can assign a percentage, like what it is now. And then what you would like it to be, you know, 100% is already divided up. Somebody's going to have to reduce, you know, add to someone else and that sort of thing. It's been fairly healthy over the years. But I will remind you that next year, you're adding another department who has authorization to spend from there. But again, we control that, maybe on this group here. And, you know, we will be wise with it, I think. But I agree, we have parks and open spaces that we've limited our investment in. We should invest in what we have. I like that. And I've mentioned that to the CPPS board, that my philosophy, working through Mike Martin, our supervisor, is that how do we invest in what we have and what it's going to take to do that? This is not a big parks master plan. This is about everyday users going out there and seeing the new fence, seeing the parking lot that looks good, not stuff everywhere. Playground equipment that's, hey, it's inviting, it's safe, that sort of thing. And then we have the fields and that sort of stuff. How do we invest in that? And then we could start moving into a different direction should that future call for that, you know? And then maybe that boosts more people to come and join our parks and rep program and use the space at a more heightened level than what we have, you know? So it's more inviting. I think that should be the philosophy, but again, I'm not here at the disposal of that. But this is one way we can do that. The general fund covers personnel, park programming, you know, there's a few hundred thousand in there. The everyday operational expense. Special sales tax, again, can go with parks equipment, parks vehicles, that kind of thing. Cemetery, that, those pieces of it that are related to parks and public spaces.
And I think it's wise that you mentioned that since we are starting a new system for that, is that this January or next January, that we can pull in all emergency response to the special sales tax?
That will be, that's, the sunset was this year and we passed it last year. So we don't have to go to election. So it will be, it will be 2025.
2025.
Yeah.
So it would be a great idea to formulate that policy that pulls in, we're now, we can now serve our community, our police department, our fire department and our public works. So I think it's just a good time for that strategy as well.
So should, should we bring something that suggests we think these would be the appropriate kind of breakdowns? Or would you like to set that percentage, how you would want to invest these funds going forward?
I think it would be good for us to know how it's been spent so far. So we're not just guessing in the dark. Anyone else have thoughts on either sci-fi or special sales tax?
My thought is, and I have never had an idea how that's been dispersed, but it worries me sometime. I don't want to say a binge at the park is more important, important than the firemen getting this equipment at the place, you know? That's what makes me nervous. And I don't know if I've ever even asked that. Have we ever talked about that? The percentage, how that's been allocated, which? So that would be interesting to see that.
Yeah, it sounds like that would be valuable information.
Right.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly do that. And it's a, it's a place to start other conversations. One doesn't begat the other, right?
Right.
The fire department has had their opportunity because there was definitely a need, folks. And I can see from that experience where I had the worst equipment I could ever inherit. And so we did what we needed to do. You've got the best ladder truck you can have, you've got pumper trucks. You've done your due diligence of getting that up to a certain standard, right? So now we can level that off and now we can refocus. And then if we have this plan that we'll devise on how to rotate this stuff and pay for it in the future, we have time to do that as well. So my suggestion is, the timing is now before us that we can start shifting these priorities with that particular account. We have to pay for what we have, right? So that's, that's already, already a number we have to allocate. But beyond there and the new collections and that sort of thing. And then we're adding a new department, but maybe we only want public safety to have 35% of the new stuff. And the rest of it's going to go to streets and to parks. You know, that's something, we'll bring you some ideas and then you tell us what you want. And then we'll tell you how it's being done right now.
Thank you.
Do you think you could, you couldn't assign a percentage? I guess it could be changed though, couldn't it? Like 100% of the special sales tax, you couldn't break that up into percentages, could you? I mean, it wouldn't, it's always just kind of come to us and, you know, like, yes, we need a fire truck. Let's buy it. Or yes, we need it for the police cars. I mean, I don't understand how.
Right.
You could, how you could say parks department's going to get 20% of this. Police, now that they're on it, are going to get 35%. Fire gets 35. And then you got 15% left for streets. And I mean, wouldn't that be on an as-needed priority basis on who would get that? I mean.
I think that's how it has gone. Well, that was big purchases. So how the other stuff was spent, I have no idea.
That's how it's been done in the past, but there's been no strategy, no investment strategy or asset strategy related to that account.
And I think only the big stuff came to us, so I don't.
Well, yeah, it did because the fire truck was the first thing I think that went.
Right.
And that's when Hollywood Hotel was going to be built.
There was definitely some needs that our general fund could not support at the time. I mean, the timing of this passage and this source of income couldn't have been better. And there, even though we leased purchased, you know, we purchased this for long-term payments, that, that, I believe it's quarter cent sales tax paid for those things and are paying for them. So what I'm suggesting is we already know what that is, right? So what the remaining amount becomes that 100% of a new amount. And you can say, okay, we're not giving public safety 100% of this money. We want, when you do a budget of that particular account, we want to see that you are, we know what the payments already are, we're going to shift those over a little bit. But what's remaining should be allocated in these percentages, right? In the sense of, okay, we want to see 30% go to parks. Streets should be, you know, whatever that $100,000 we normally budget in there should be that percentage or however we want to. I think we can give you some ideas and you go, okay, this makes policy sense because that's what we're asking you to do. If you're not happy with somewhat the, you know, as it comes, we're going to just say, we're going to fund this kind of thing out of there. Then we have to have some sort of policy discussion and where do we start with that? And if we're not doing a good enough job of saying, investing in the parks with this particular fund, you should tell us what that should be so we can kind of have a benchmark, something we can all relate to, right? And Mr. Gerber, if he has any other suggestions?
Moving right along, what policies would you like to see? I know we've covered quite a bit already. What policies would you like to see to ensure best practices for budget accountability? Is there anything we haven't touched on, anything you want to reiterate? We talked about fund balance percentages. We've talked about how we want to see the budgets coming in. Does anyone have anything they want to share on that?
I think Councilmember Bishop had a good point. Just bring us the numbers and explanations. You know, we don't, it was very, Zach would have some good presentations. It was a lot. And I get it too sometimes if we don't necessarily even know how much gas you used because we know the police department uses a lot of gas. But I get it where sometimes that, in a presentation or a report, the number was high, well, we used an unusual amount of gas. I just, if the numbers are pretty status quo, good job. If they're off a little bit, some explanations. That's my two cents.
So not so much of one big bucket, but department buckets.
Correct, correct.
You think of it kind of like a running, just a running account of.
Right.
You know, they were going to spend $25,000 this month and they're at $19,000.
Correct.
But they want to go over and then fly and, yeah, that makes sense.
Right, that's.
That could almost be presented, I don't know what the new computer programs coming in. Maybe that could be a manager minute report.
Exact, unless that means.
Apparently simple to just say, here's these numbers, throw them in there and give them to the council.
Yeah. I think we could devise something that makes sense. Rather than giving you some of these, these reports that you see today, you get an idea of what it is, but it really doesn't say maybe what the question that you have. It's not answering that particular question. And so we can devise, and we have, we have the ability to change things as we go. It's not satisfactory. So I guess our gauge right now is, you mentioned previous presentations of a quarterly report that took 20 to 40 minutes on average. We just did it in 12, I think with a few discussions. Very simple, we told you what our first quarter performance was. Is that okay? Do we need to go beyond that? Those are the questions that you, you should ask and we should answer for you, you know, vice versa. You know, if that was acceptable, we want to continue that trend. And then there's other ways that we can communicate some of the more detailed things in a weekly report. You know, we can, we can send this out to you and maybe something, something a little more, just, I would say, common sense readable, says this is where we should be. We're right on that or below it or above it, that sort of thing. And here's something that's maybe odd, maybe something unusual, maybe something outside the bell curve that says, oh, you're going to have a question about it. I kind of gave that to you just recently. Mayor, maybe it was you who asked me about a $4,800 Samsung tablet purchase. Well, it drew my attention. I knew what it was, but two weeks later, it just turned up again on your report. And so that drew my attention and I wanted to tell you about it because we accidentally entered the wrong vendor name. It was, we just needed to correct it. We did not pay it twice. But if you're paying attention, you would have saw that same number twice for the same product and you would have questioned that. So I wanted, that's kind of what I'm thinking is, how do we get those things that are unusual and report those as well as just kind of the standard performance of the budget? Rather, I know we get it in the packet here, you know, and we've been seeing that for years. But there may be another way that we can maybe be a little more creative, maybe more common sense. And that may draw some more questions, which is fine, you know, we want to answer.
And that's kind of what I'm hearing from Council is not necessarily belaboring the meetings with really long presentations, but having that information emailed on a regular basis that shows kind of those department buckets and how we're progressing throughout the year. If we're staying on track in those itemized budgets that are coming through. Any other things that we'd like to see? I know Councilman Bishop and I feel like we all are on the same page with making sure that our fund balance is at that 15% or better. I'd sure like to hear if we're dipping below. And I know you've kept us informed of that recently, but we weren't kept apprised of that information before. So just kind of having that policy, I think, would be nice to have governing body aware if we dip below that 15% once we get it back up there.
Yeah, certainly.
And then debt service, I think, would be helpful too. Council, when we're, we're going to finish up here in the next couple of minutes, but I would just kind of like to share your top two to five priority projects or priorities for the upcoming budget. So as staff's going and working on their plans to present to us, I think it's important to just hear from Council what you guys are thinking.
Do we?
Anybody say now?
Yeah.
Any free for all here?
Well, my first, my first would be the new facility. And second would be streets, obviously. But could we get some time this year? I know in the past, we've done like a Pacer rating. Do we have that currently? Or and/or a list of the current, the jobs and the streets and the projects that are going to be taking place? And if we could make that kind of pub, and I know, just at some point, that way, we've had in the past, you know, people say, well, this street looks horrible, but they don't know that that might be third on the list, you know? And they see this one getting worked on. It just helps if they know. What are you saying? Oh, Mark. Mark, I know. Do you know what I'm saying? We've done that in the past. I think it helps with people saying, well, that, that street didn't need to be worked on before mine. So I think making that public at some point. Do you know, you know what I'm asking?
My response is, we're well in tune.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Gerber would agree that we've been setting some priorities, trying to do things. We certainly, we found value in that presentation in the past. We're going to do things just a little bit different. We're a little behind the game, it's a little late in the year. But what you should see is some sort of report, as you, as you somewhat mentioned there, at the next meeting. It's not to say that we haven't been working those priorities, you know, and that sort of thing. But we want you to see what, number one, we have identified as the priorities, where the financial assignment's going to come from, right? Where are we going to get this money? And how we're going to spend the money already allocated and that sort of thing. And, you know, go from there. Again, we have a number of projects that are pending that is about, I like to use the word tangible, is that you can see it, you can feel it, you can hear it, you can see the thing getting paved and you get to drive on it. And then you, two years from now, you're still talking about when they fix that road. Because, you know, for, either we did it right or we did it wrong. They didn't, we did good enough or it might be all of those things. But in the end, people are talking about, they're seeing it and that sort of thing. We're doing more with our money about getting farther and sidewalks and just taking care of some of these roads that we have than, you know, for whatever reasons have ignored. And then we have to have a maintenance plan, which is exactly kind of what you're talking about, is how do we take care of what we have? We have roads that, though they're dated, if we did a little bit of something to them, you know, they last longer, that sort of thing. So that's a part of what Mr. Gerber and I and our public works department will be working on and hopefully to have some form of presentation to you, as you've seen in the past, this coming next.
Perfect. I'm going to say, I'm, I'm still on my list, sorry. My third, and it's not like it's a major priority, but I know the pavilion down at our park, that roof has been bad for a while. I don't know when the last time we had it looked at, but the last time we had it looked at, it was bad. It needed to be replaced. And I'm going to say that was three, four, five years ago. Just get an assessment on that because we got hailed on too, I think.
There's a lot of roofing companies in town right now.
Right.
It's a good time to do that right now because they would not know if it was damaging over on the reference. No, I would call them anyway.
We are.
Good.
Good.
Wonderful.
Due to the hell damage.
Right. I just know that's a, that's our, that's our big city park and I, I just. I just know that's a, that's our, that's our big city park and I, I just know that's needed to be tended to for years and years. It may not be a huge big priority, but I kinda think it is. And in line with that, our community center, a little facelift down there. A little bit of landscaping that doesn't need to be, I, I just, we're down there when we help with harvesters. It just needs a little curb appeal. That wouldn't take much. And then that parking lot as well. So that's my wish list, sorry.
Yeah.
But I got more.
Right, go ahead. I won't take. Your five.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump in. Public works facility's gotta be a priority. As long as, as long as we're doing facilities, you know, city hall, fireplace, we gotta do something about public works. And I don't think the park is the place to do it. I think we need to get some property somewhere, but that's something that has to be discussed. Our equipment needs to be parked inside. We can't leave this stuff outside like this. We don't have enough bank overhangs to park under when it fails. Margaret, you got mine, you know, I was worried about the parking lot at the city, at the community center. I've said something about it two or three times in the last couple of years. It needs to be sealed and striped, I think, and our parking lot out here probably does too. Wood End Road is getting pretty bad. And I think it needs some work for sure. We're gonna lose it. I've been on it, I go on it just about every day and it's bad. And maybe the sand plants should put their tarp's on and quit throwing sand out on that where they come out on it. It's like driving on, in the desert. When you do, that's a kinda, maybe a police matter or something on that. But I, you know, they, they shouldn't do that. I think we need to figure out some kinda way of dealing with the church on the, the historic cemetery. I'm not, I'm. It's a charity called, they want money. We don't give them that. But I think we should try, I'm sorry about that. I thought it was off. I think we need to figure out some kind of a deal with the church up there on that, that historic cemetery. I'm not thinking that cul-de-sac is the place to be parking, but that's my opinion. Okay, what else did I have? That's what I've got for now, but are we still gonna have a council portion?
Yeah.
This is it. Okay, I'll save the others for that. Oh, on the streets, what the improvements that are going on right now, like Ninety-Eighth Street and all the stuff that's going on, throw, throw something in hot shot on that and say, this is what we're doing. You know, give it another page or something or send out a special edition. You know, here's what our street situation is, is doing right now. This is what we're doing, you know, for the people that are saying, man, you're not doing anything for the roads. And I think a lot of times just information getting out to people is one of the downfall that we have. I think people don't realize those kinda things are happening. And what is, you know, I'll wait for the council. That, that's me.
Your priorities. Same. Making notes. Okay.
Well, I do personally, I, I agree, Margaret, the park needs some work. And I go down there, I've got grandkids that play soccer down there and that field's horrible. For the amount of kids that come down there and play and the amount of parents that are down there sitting on lawn chairs and whatever. And we need to do something down there, get that aerated and seated or something because it's, you know, you could break a leg. And I told Mike Martin that, I said, I'm gonna try on the council end of it to see if we can't get something done. Maybe there's some grant money out there for that or something to work on that part.
You're okay?
I keep thinking of stuff.
Did you have any?
Just the beautification of Edwardsville Park. That's about it. It's got, it's a great program for both baseball, softball and soccer. Just you go to other facilities and ours looks rundown. Yeah. And so I'd love to see that for quite a bit. Mike Martin does a great job of what he's got, but it'd be nice to see him do some upgraded stuff down there. And then a long-term priority would be maybe a sidewalk from Speaker to Williamson Farm on One Hundred and Ten Street. Edwardville Drive from the south. Yeah. Just a nice little sidewalk where families can walk up and down there safely.
Hey, why don't we reach out to Sporting? I mean, they've given KC Cave millions of dollars to build them soccer fields.
Just that football court.
Still, reach out to them and say, hey, you know, hey.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No.
Right.
Did they talk about pickleball?
I'm not sure.
Do you have any more?
I, I'm in, right in line with Margaret except for I, sidewalks and street and park, you know, for the park to, just like she said, the roof on the, the shelter there and just, there's just a lot of stuff that needs to be done there.
All that deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
Then it finally falls down or something. We don't like that. We need to take care of that stuff.
Yeah, and that, that's right. We, I would love to see us take care of the stuff that we, that we have. I mean, I want Edwardsville to be somewhere that the, and my kids are older, they don't go to the park. So, I mean, but I would love to see the people whose kids are at that age that can walk and enjoy the park. You know, instead of taking their families out of the community to spend time with their kids and enjoy, they should be able to enjoy the, where, where they live. And so, I mean, that's what I think.
Well, I think, I think a lot of us are on the same page here. And so that's really, really nice to see and hear that a lot of us are moving in the same direction. I think just feedback from the community, streets has been a big priority for a really long time. I have been driving through Edwardsville, well, for a long time, but recently it, we've done a lot. We've done a lot for streets in the last few years. And so I'm just promoting that, I think is great and letting people know what we've done, but then continuing on that so we don't fall back into bad, you know, bad streets again. But in improving and maintaining and continuing that, taking care of our streets, reliving tax burden whenever we're able. And I know that's, that's, that's kind of a loaded thing, but just making sure that we're being as accountable and, and disciplined with our friends as much as we possibly can. And then what, what residents want is to see something for that tax money. And we have to pay for city services and we wanna take care of what we have, but they're going, I pay so much in taxes. Granted, a lot of it's going to the county and a lot of it's going to the community college. But for what we have, we wanna make sure that we are doing it with excellence and that we're taking care of our parks as well as we can, that we're taking care of our assets and, and our community as well as we can. We're investing in those tangible items so that, that they can see, hey, this is your tax dollars going to work for you. I think it's fantastic. When we're moving forward for the buildings, you'll hear me over and over talking about staying under budget so we're not increasing a tax burden and making those, any investments community-minded. So they're serving not only our staff who, who we need to take care of, but also serving our residents as well. Any other budget thoughts? Okay, I think we're gonna wind this down with council comments. First, the city manager comments, did you have anything for us this evening?
Nothing more than what we've reported over the last couple of weeks. And we are pursuing grant opportunities anywhere that we can. We've made phase three of Ninety-Eighth Street, which I mentioned. We have made application for STP funds and mark, mark federal share funds. Those were awarded the first two phases and what I understood today, it's just a quick report from the end of the day, is that there were less competition, even from the Kansas side, it was down, the requests were down in numbers. So maybe we can, once again, if we can get that whole road done with federal matching funds, we've done really well. We've been very competitive. Somebody calls us swinging above or something, you know, punching, punching up, you know, okay. You know, whatever it takes to get those things done. So I'm excited about at least, maybe we can get to the second round. Get to the second round, we have, we have, we have a really fighting chance for that, to get that whole road done. Hardest part, folks, most expensive ten plus million is to do that phase three. The number of driveways, how encroached to the road the houses are and that sort of thing. So it's a, we need the matching funds, we're gonna get that done.
We are scaling that back so we're not taking out homes compared to the north end, correct?
Well, it's, it, there's, that's eighty feet. That road in, in the sense that it has to be built with the pedestrian mobility, all of the things, curb and gutter, it will be the same right of way. But if you look at it today, it's almost sixty already. So, yeah.
And I think we're gonna be in people's living rooms.
It's, it's gonna be tight, I know that much. You know, we haven't seen the designs and things. We don't even have the funding yet, but we'll explore those things and maybe there's some other options as we move forward. I just can't say until we get to that survey and where the right of way actually is. So we are just a few days from opening bids on Kansas Avenue. I think that's pretty exciting. Our projections were, we were gonna build curb and gutters on a, you know, rarely used road, frankly, comparatively. It was gonna be very expensive, but I think we have a road product that we'll be proud of that will last us fifteen, twenty years if we do the maintenance. If you don't defer that kinda stuff going forward, then you know what happens when you do. So we'll have a plan for that. So we hope to have that done by summer. And that's exciting. Richland is coming along, One Hundred and Sixth Street will be very similar to what we do for Kansas, right? That is, we're gonna fix the base, if you will, and then there'll be asphalt on top of that. It'll be a good road for the years to come. Talked about, a little bit about sidewalks in that area. Maybe, maybe a walking lane was suggested, that sort of thing. But we're exploring our options if there is some other funds that we can put into the project. Richland will be built with, twenty twenty-five, coming spring, with the sidewalk. Absolutely think that's necessary because you can always tie back into it. You could ride your bike, for example, or walk down One Hundred and Sixth as it is now, it's a wide enough road. Little hilly dangerously, but you know, some of that we can't fix. But if you get to Richland, guess what you can do? Go east, you can hit One Hundred Second, Kansas brand new right there, around that curve. Sidewalk beautiful, go to Ninety-Eighth Street, you can go either direction when it's all said and done. And, right, we're not going somewhere else, we're right here in our town. We're right here in its interconnectivity. We hope to get One Hundred and Fourth Street out to bid very soon, which is One Hundred and Fourth Street Extension for the sidewalk. Talking a lot about sidewalks lately. I'm excited about that project. Maybe a little more in expense than, than expected just because of some of the terrain was a little more challenging. What I've said and my written material to you is we need to be apprised that there are nine trees that'll have to come out and they're very mature. I thought that was most disappointing. I gotta, I can live with maybe that the numbers are a little higher, but darn it, we have to take out some trees.
Is that on the west side?
It is on, would be on the west, right by the curb to Metropolitan. And then there's some as you come farther south towards Forest Street. But what we could do, if, if, just as an option, keep this in mind, what we could do, should it be so costly that we just, no way, we're not gonna do it that way. What we could do is use the internal Ways and Farms already improved infrastructure, come to the cul-de-sac, come through the easement that's already there and tie that to the school for now, right? And then you'd have the sidewalk right in front of the school. And that would avoid the trees and some of the costs that going farther north up there would, would, would incur. It's gonna be somewhat more expensive than we originally anticipated. I was disappointed in that as well. But just FYI, we're not finally there, what we want to know is what a contractor will build that for. I appreciate the engineering and all the cost assessments, but I wanna know, is there a contractor out there that's gonna build it for X? And, and again, as I said, they can bid it all day long, but we don't have to accept any of it, right? It's, but it's gonna be, I wanna be able to tell you, this contractor will do it for this much money. And that's what I want to know. So that takes some of the speculation out of it. I'd, I'd like to be at that position, that's a good project. Because I think it's all something, you know, there's ARPA money and there's, there's an abundance in the sense if we wanna invest in that particular fund to get that one done, there is ARPA money that's, that's well available. So those are kinda my sidewalk and, and kinda what's happening right now with cost assessments already, already applied to these projects and going out for bid and putting bid packages together. So we're, we're really making some progress. Again, I like the tangibility of these things. There may be opportunity for surplus in the bond issues, the temporary notes that we issued and the money we have. We may have some surplus funds that we can talk about. Maybe Shawnee tying into One Hundred and Six, maybe One Hundred and Fourth from a certain point coming north to tie into One Hundred and Six of just redoing that road, similar to what we did at Schwartz was a pretty deep road. Or we can focus on what we did at Kansas, a little less cost, but it gets that road improved for fifteen years. That shoulder needs attention. If you've been north of Schwartz on One Hundred and Fourth, there's a, already you can see the wearing and the water roading that side of that, that there, that just shows that that road maybe needs some, some attention. So if you, somebody talking to me? Okay. That if we go north of there, that we could tie that through Shawnee to Edwardsville Drive and then you have One Hundred and Six all the way to Richland, see how we're doing? So there may be enough surplus in that whole thing to reissue that to, to a, a different project. And then we have that whole section, because remember we've done Kansas, One Hundred and Second, Richland, One Hundred and Six, right? Well, when you, all that area and then Schwartz, if you remember, excuse me, a couple of years ago, we did Schwartz Avenue. So you get that whole section of all redone roads, maybe within the next twenty-four months with maybe the same money. That's kinda what I'm envisioning at this point. That's what I have to think of.
Thank you. Councilman Mullen?
No comment.
Nothing? Councilman Bishop?
Yes. Everybody who's listening and sitting in this room, you realize our Kansas legislature gave themselves a ninety-three percent raise and they didn't even have to vote on it. They went from thirty thousand dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars for ninety days of work. That's over two hundred thousand dollars. That's the base pay for them people up there. Ninety days and they didn't even have to vote on it. You should be as mad as I am about that. I mean, there's a surplus up there, but think ninety-three percent when they only give state employees five percent.
Did the senators get a raise too?
All of them did. And that was just the base salary. The Speaker of the House and the Senate, they make, they're gonna make ninety-some thousand dollars for ninety days worth of work, which they don't, if you've ever been up there, not a lot of work going on in ninety days. There's a lot of conferencing and that kinda thing going on. That's outrageous. That's completely outrageous. That's all I got.
Councilman Ross?
Well, I don't know if I can follow that or not. Sorry. I got several little things. I think we need to beef up codes inspections with the springtime coming. There's two or three places that really need some attention. I'll tell you privately so it doesn't get out. Legal is here. We got a report on delinquent trash bills on basically, or Trent Street, Beet Street over in there.
Utility bills, you mean, yes.
Well, the, the delinquent payments that are due. What can we do about that? It's, I'm calling it absentee land homeowners and rental patrons that move out, refuse to pay their bill. Is there anything legally we can do to recoup that, that was nine thousand dollars or something? So.
Yeah, that's something we can.
Kinda yield a legal on that.
Yeah.
It is on our radar as a four o'clock conversation just today, right? Between Doug, Mr. Gerber and I and reviewing some ordinances, some of the state statutes, what, what, how, what our practices, some of the letters that we're sending. We do, we do believe that maybe landlords have some protection against, you know, having to pay the bills of their renters. And therefore, that's the question that we will pose to legal and the LKM and all the sources that we can get so we can have the right information about pursuing that. The example that I gave is, is if we could change the ordinance or something, and that's what legal will answer for us, that there is some sort of recourse against, for landlordship, if you will, that, that they, in this particular case, a landlord, an owner, is refusing to enter their vacant home in their own name of utilities. And then of a certain amount of properties that they do own, three or four of them are delinquent in their utility payments by a pretty good number. And so what do we do legislatively, legally? How can we address that? And there may not be anything we can do, but go do what we do. Collections, stop accounts, that sort of thing. But a new tenant could move in there and restart it, they're in good standing. I mean, that, that could be as simple as answers we could get. But we wanna, we wanna find that answer out. We wanna be able to answer it with confidence and we'll have our legal team join that. And we'll have an answer to you soon and later because we need to start managing this thing. Because it's, I can report to you that at one point, the report was over four hundred thousand dollars in delinquency. As you were, you were apprised of that prior to my time. Since I acquired that and went, oh, my goodness, it was over three hundred thousand. We're down to about two hundred and ten thousand dollars with just a policy change of enforcing our ordinances and stopping the delivery of service. Now, there's some unique things that happened that, depending on the situation, that I learned something new, right? And I'm like, okay, we have to address this, but it's, you know, it's a. But it's, it's a system of new people doing new, these things, and they learned it from someone else, kind of, that sort of thing. So we're trying to correct it. It takes just a little bit of time, but I think we've done a pretty decent job of that. 232,000, now we're down to 210,000. We have several in collections, we have several in payment plans, which we, we need to offer those things. But we're going to address with legal on, on our time to, to get a real good answer.
Well, I think with the budget discussions that that's something that we need to know about as it's happening. So we can at least say, hey, kind of push you a little bit and try and get that taken care of. I'd like to be able to not pay my trash bill too. But, you know, we've always given the citizens of Edwardsville a pretty easy way of getting rid of their trash. We paid for it for a while, you know, we keep it as low as we can. But anyway, thank you for that. I just kind of wanted that information on the record here. I wanted to say something, uh, thank you, but I'm, I'm, I want to hold this thank you until midnight Saturday the 13th, but I'm going to say it in advance. You know what, I'm getting ready to say it, don't you? On the 13th of April, we have evidently gotten the approval to not have horns blowing on the railroad crossings on 98th, 9th, 4th, Holiday Sand and Swings Street Road in Bonner. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. I want to start with Jim Walters, who started that with the commissioners. I want to say Chuck Stites continued it. I want to say that I was the squeaky wheel that was complaining about that at every single meeting. And I said, I was not going to stop complaining about that until they quit blowing their whistles. But if that actually happens, this is an official thank you. If it doesn't happen, get some oil because I'm going to keep squeaking. The, the last, I always have that one. The last thing I want to say is I noticed that we're going to have a resignation in the police department of a vital, vital person in the police department and a four-legged, I think a four-legged critter is probably going to go with him. I want to recognize Peter Yasbek for his years of service and the different things that he's done for the city as a Public Works Director and also as a pretty quality police officer and K-9 controller. So make sure that he gets that message from me and I'm sure the rest of the council too. Personally, I want to make sure that he gets something for that because he's a quality, quality guy. And I wish him luck in whatever he does in the future. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll try not to bother you too much. But I do ask a lot of questions.
It's all right. What we're here for.
Councilman Travis?
Have the Royals called you yet?
I stayed up to watch the news last, didn't see you.
Greg Kendall?
I saw Greg.
That's, I thought I'd add a little humor as well. Um, I will ask about the, the packet that came to us in an email with the, um, check register reports. And it's not here. Maybe you can answer it. There was a cemetery line and it had zero. Can you read my mind?
Uh, maybe for expenditures?
Maybe it was. It's not in front of us. And I, I just noticed it when I was reviewing a couple of days ago and I thought, well, maybe I need to ask that.
So item number 1B of your packet is the statement of bills paid.
Right.
And the cemetery that we paid no bills.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's all I needed. I, I assumed that's what it was, but I thought, need to ask.
And I, as promised, we are delivering you a CPPS board, a specific report about the finances for the cemetery and the background information from the bank, the statements.
Correct. Perfect. Thank you. oh my gosh. Covered almost everything, but I did want to say, um, so our city cleanup day is May 18th? Or 25th? What day is that?
It's the third Saturday.
18th.
The calendar's a long way away for me.
Right, right. Um, last year, we, we, the city of Edwardsville, I'm not sure who put it together, put together a really nice flyer about the sales tax and what, what has been purchased from that. For the, you know, this was kind of a, hey, so maybe this year we do a flyer on the great things that are going on. And even include some things we've done with the, you know, just include it. I know it's not going to cover what was just passed, but still, just give ourselves some kind of, here's what's going on, here's some great things that have happened. It's free. There's a lot of people that come there. I handed out those flyers last year. There was a lot, right?
That's right.
Right. Anything you can think, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this early enough, just be creative. Hey, here's what's coming up on the backside. Here's what's coming up. You know, our Autumn Fest. It just, it's something, you know, we can do a mailer, we can do something like that, but this is an opportunity to get some information out there. The communication stream is-
It's rough.
It's very rough. It's very rough. I know we've got the elementary school to, you know, do the Parks and Recs kind of stuff, you know, more geared toward the sports events, but, um, just put that in the back of your head as far as something to hand out on that day. And, oh boy. That's what I was going to, I, I suggested like a quarterly letter, but then I thought of last year doing that flyer, so. I think that's all I have. Isn't that terrible? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Nocat? I don't have anything. Okay, so thank you everybody for your time. I'm going to wrap it up quickly because I'm about an hour past when I thought we would be finishing up tonight. So we are going to wrap it up. I, I would like to mention just the opportunity for council or, or discussion on maybe the option of scaling back 98th Street because our, those houses are so much closer to the road. I know residents down there that are really concerned about that. I'd say we don't need a multi-purpose trail and a sidewalk down both sides when we can maybe just do one. If there are things that we can do to make it more neighbor-friendly, that would be great. Wanted to invite everyone to the Junius Grove's signed dedication on April 19th. That'll be before our next meeting at 98th and K-32 at 6:00 PM. So we hope to see you all there. Have a great evening.
Good job. Thank you.
Great.